All the June meeting of the Colonial School Board of Education to order. Our host this evening and leading us in the pledge of allegiance is Mr. Pete Lyte or Dr. Pete Lyte. Pete, if you would please.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic which it stands.
One nation under God.
Thank you. Also, just a quick statement here. As a district, we are improving ourselves and empowering others to do the same in regards to iniquities. We would like to take a moment of silence to recognize the impact that our nation's events have had on our families of our communities, if we would please. Okay, thank you. First order of business that we have is any additions or corrections to the meeting agenda? Does any board members have any additions or corrections? If not, I have two. We need to add or we need to remove from our agenda item number 10C, which is the Transportation MOU. And add number 13 for the request for 12-month employees annual lead carryover in excess of 42 days to be extended for up to 42, up to six months. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the additions and corrections to the board agenda? Pete or Leo McGee, I'm sorry. Do I hear a second to move to approve the motion or the agenda as corrected? Okay, Rosie Wolf, thank you very much. Okay, consent agenda, which consists of board meeting minutes, education items, bid contracts. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Rosie Wolf will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Lucy Kennedy says second.
A movement second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions? If not, as I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Ms. Wolf?
Yea.
Mr. McGee?
Yea.
Mr. Crossen? Take yourself off of mute, Robyn, please.
Yay.
All right, Ms. Kennedy?
Yay.
And myself, yea. The motion is carried. Next order of business we have is the the improvement or the consideration of the administrative appointments and assignments. Item number five on our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the appointments and assignments as discussed in executive session? Afternoon, Mr. Handy.
Hey. Make a motion to approve assignments discussed in the executive committee.
Do I hear a second? Been moved and approved or moved a second to approve the administrative appointments and assignments as discussed in executive sessions. Do I have any questions? Hearing none, as I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Crossen?
Yay.
Ms. Wolf?
Yea.
Mr. McGee?
Yea.
Mr. Handy?
Yea.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yea.
And myself, yea. The motion is carried. Next order of business we have is the Colonial Student Code of Conduct revisions. The board was given a student code of conduct for their review and the first reading was held last month.
No, it'll be this. This is the first read.
My mistake. This will be the first read of the student code of conduct for their review and first read.
At this time, Mr. Laws, if I could ask Ms. Nikki Jones, Director of Secondary Schools, to kind of provide a quick high-level overview of what's in the packet. For all clarity, I think she's tapped into the show here.
She is. She just needs to take herself off of mute.
Yep. Nikki, why don't you go ahead and unmute and join the party.
Good evening. Paul Law, Vice President Kennedy, Colonial Board Member, Dr. Menzer and Colonial Nation.
Nikki, if I could, if I could interrupt you for one second, if everyone would please mute their their systems, it'd be good because there's some type of background noise there that's kind of busting into everybody. Okay, Nikki, you can go ahead now. Sorry.
This evening, I present the work of the Colonial, of the School Climate Committee. This collaborative group consists of teachers, specialists, and school and district leaders. Since early March 2020, we have worked to align the Colonial School District Student Code of Conduct with Delaware Senate Bill 85 and the practices of responsive classroom and restorative practices. All proposed changes were reviewed and approved by legal counsel. The School Climate Committee is confident that the proposed changes will positively impact our schools and communities.
Thank you, Nikki.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions, Ms. Jones? Mr. Crosson, any questions?
No. No.
Okay, Ms. Wolf?
Just one. Ms. Jones, would you mind just a high-level summary around the restorative practices? What changed with that?
So what's within the House bill you talk, speaking of?
Yeah, what we're incorporating in, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, what has happened is they, with regards to school suspensions and all, we want to ensure the House bill was changed to ensure that students were receiving restorative conversations and conferences before being entered back into the classroom. This helps to, helps to bridge and maintain a positive relationship with the teacher and the student and/or family members as well. So that was one of the biggest changes that took place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. McGee, any questions?
Nikki said no.
No, no questions, Ted. Thank you.
Mr. Handy, any questions?
Just one. Are you looking for other alternatives before we suspend kids out of school?
So yes, throughout the Student Code of Conduct, if you notice that there's been some, we added in added in sessions with school counselors, we have wellness centers. Those are restorative circus, restorative circles within restorative practices as well as morning meetings and all of that with responsive classroom. The restorative conferences are huge throughout this code of conduct and it is, it falls basically under the majority of the the infractions that you will find in a code of conduct.
Have you ever thought of, just thinking outside the box of using students within the school as a committee? That way they feel, they may feel a little more fairness if they have to be suspended?
So what you mean for discipline issues or, so I know at the elementary level, we have peer mediators. And I know that that's been implemented in some of the middle schools as well to help to have conversations and restore relationships among peers, amongst peers. So I know that that is implemented at the element specifically. I can highlight one at Cary Downey where a teacher conducted her entire dissertation around it.
Thank you.
Wouldn't we not get into a privacy issue if we're doing that at either level?
So there are many programs, Ted, that offer what Ron is talking about, student student courts, students would do the peer mediations, they would be involved in some of the minor infractions. So there are programs that you can look at that align to code of conducts. And I do think that one of the, you know, one of the bigger ones that Nikki has mentioned is these restorative conferences and meetings between the family, the student, the staff member and the school in terms of healing the relationship that may be tainted or soured due to the disciplinary action or the behavior. The behavior, it comes both ways. It's both the school as well as the person committing the infraction kind of coming together. So those are things they, those parties engage in willingly. When you involve other students in peer mediation, they have to agree and typically the families have to agree for those children to be involved in that process. So much of the privacy violations are waived and they don't get the details, intimate details of the incidents when they're managing. There's usually a script they follow with the students or the staff member.
Well, I know Nikki said that she's went over all of this with, this was all reviewed by legal, so I'm sure that was one of their questions that they made sure that we had the i's dotted and the t's crossed on.
That is correct. So we'll bring this back in the July meeting for the second read and the approval so we can move forward with preparing the code for next year.
For some, yeah, for some reason or other, my screen went blank, so kind of like my brain from time to time. Okay, the next order of business we have is along the same lines. It's the policy review for Title IX. Jeff, who would be talking to that?
I'm going to ask Betsy Fleetwood to present this revision to the Title IX policy.
Hi, good evening. President Law, Vice President Kennedy. I just wanted to introduce the Title IX update. This is a change to the policy that we currently had. This is as a result of the federal guidelines that had changed. So we had legal help draw this up. We're asking for a first read tonight and then we'll bring it back in the July meeting for a vote. For a second read and a vote.
Would you, would you give us a quick overview, please?
I believe the major changes of it involves like some of the retaliation that can happen and then false claims that come through. We did align this with our code of conduct and made sure that they was going through. So it's a lot of small changes. I'm sorry, I don't have like the specifics that go through, but pretty much aligns with what we had prior to, but just some of the specific changes in regards to how we investigate and how we make sure that confidentiality is maintained.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Ms. Fleetwood on this? Mr. Crosson? Questions?
No.
All right, Ms. Wolf?
No.
Mr. McGee? Mr. Handy?
No, sir.
All right, Ms. Kennedy?
Will we get a printout of what exactly that the whole thing is?
It should be in the board docs, Ms. Kennedy. There is an attachment, I believe, in there. If it doesn't come up for you, please email Mary Beth to make sure that you have it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Fleetwood, for your presentation. Next order of business we have is business. Ms. Falcon?
Good evening, President Law, Vice President Kennedy and Colonial Nation. I have two presentations for you this evening. I'm going to start with the financial presentation. And I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my screen. Okay, I believe everyone can see that. So we are looking at the Budget Variance Report for the month ending April 2020. There we go. This report was reviewed by the Finance Oversight Committee on a Zoom meeting that we had on June 2nd. We've seen 83% of the fiscal year go by. As of the preparation of this report, we've received just under our 100% of our expected annual revenue. As would be expected with the slowdown in spending that we've asked for, we are under budget right now at just under 80% spending year-to-date and just under 83% when you add in all the encumbrances that were sitting there. The credit card transactions, while there were some, some purchases in the month, the total was actually a negative $4,600 as we received a lot of refunds for conferences and so forth that were canceled. And there was a discussion with the Finance Committee about, you know, the continued impact of the closure on our budget and the expected financial picture for FY21. The Finance Oversight Committee did actually vote to recommend approving, recommending, excuse me, they voted to recommend bringing the report forward for board approval at the meeting. And I would entertain any questions from the board about the report at this time.
Falcon, if you could go back two screens, please. What were some of the items that you discussed in regards to the impact of the closure on the budget?
Good question. So, you know, I did note that we have, we have spent about, as of this report, about $21,000 in COVID-related expenses. So anything from cleaning products to, you know, software that was needed to purchase for preparing for remote learning. You know, there was a discussion of that. You know, we talked about nutrition and the impact that the the shift in revenue stream, you know, because they're getting reimbursement at the federal level from a different program right now. There's waivers in place. But they're still supporting, they're basically getting revenue as if they were operating during summer, but they're still operating a full, you know, they're still paying all their staff. And, you know, that's, that's one of their largest, largest expenses. So, you know, there was a discussion about the impact of the the closure on the nutrition budget and, you know, some of the expenses that we're looking at for, for next year as well as the federal relief money, the CARES Act that was appropriated for us and, you know, what, what the plans were around that, which, you know, we haven't, we haven't put in any applications that are made any final decisions. That's still an ongoing discussion.
There are, there are opportunities for us to be able to recruit money from the federal.
We are actually due to receive at least 2.7 million from the Federal CARES Act. That was one of the relief packages that was passed a couple of months ago. The Department of Education has has made an application available through the e-grants process. And we will be, you know, putting together plans for how to spend that money. Most of it is probably, well, I don't want to say most, but, you know, a lot of it is going to be used to cover expenses that, you know, that we've incurred during this timeframe. We are also looking at using it for, you know, covering the deficit that the nutrition budget has sustained. We have, you know, items that we're probably going to need to purchase to start the school year up next year. You know, disinfectant wands, Plexiglas partitions, that sort of thing, and all of that money will be used to offset those expenses.
That 2.7, is that 2.7 to Colonial School District or 2.7 to the State Board of Education?
2.7 is Colonial's portion. And I do want to mention that that is actually 80% of what we are, what our allocation was. There's, there's a little bit of a disagreement at the federal level. The, there's one camp of people who believe that we should not be, the amount of money being sent to private schools out of this pot of money should be out of, under one calculation. And there's another group of folks who think it should be out of a different calculation. The difference in the amount of money that we would be able to keep and actually budget for is fairly significant. And until that situation or that disagreement is figured out at the federal level, DOE has withheld 20% of the funds that we should be allocated. So the total allocation is actually 3.4 million. But right now, we have the opportunity to, to put a budget together for around 2.7 until that situation is resolved.
Are we allowed to put any salaries toward that or use that toward the salaries or does that all have to be other, other expenses?
I believe salaries is an allowable expense. However, you know, from a, from a structural and an ongoing perspective, it's not a good practice in my, you know, opinion to put ongoing expenses such as salary on a one-time pot of money that, you know, has a finite expiration date. So if there, if there are certain salary expenses that were incurred because of the closure, we certainly could look to, you know, to shift some of that, but I wouldn't put anything on there, you know, that would need to be extended or any new salaries that would need to be, you know, if we decided to bring on a a new staff member to help with the closure, I wouldn't want to put the salary on that because that's going to be a limited duration pot of money.
So this doesn't have the same impact as the PPP money does?
Um, to be frank, I think the PPP is the Paycheck Protection Fund. I'm honestly not that familiar with that pot of money, so I can't speak to how they compare.
Okay, all right. Other questions?
You're muted, Ted.
Do we have any questions from any other board members? Mr. McGee?
No, sir.
Mr. Handy?
No, sir.
Ms. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Crosson?
No, I'd just like to say that Emily did a good job of answering your questions and I'm glad you asked them.
Okay, good. Okay, with no other questions, do I hear a motion to approve the monthly budget variance report?
This is Rosie Wolf making a motion to approve the monthly budget report.
Robyn Crosson, second.
It's been moved a second to approve the monthly budget variance report. No further questions? As I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Crosson?
Yay.
Ms. Wolf?
Yea.
Mr. McGee?
Yea.
Mr. Handy?
Yea.
I self, yea.
Oh, I don't count.
I'm getting on there. I said Ms. Kennedy.
I didn't hear you say my name.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yay.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item of business is the tax rate.
Yep, we're going to move right into that with the next part of the presentation here. And I apologize, the slide is incorrect. This is actually for FY 2021. So my apologies there. This is an annual process that we go through where you set the tax rate. It is due to the county by the second Thursday in July. We're actually looking at it a little bit early this year. Because of the extraordinary situation going on and the guidance and information coming out of the state, I felt it was very unlikely that they would be putting any new or changed taxing authority our way. So I felt like it was a good, a good time to just sort of get it out of the way since, you know, the earlier the county can get the bills out, the better, the better they are. And the tax bills are, as it says here, processed by Newcastle County on our behalf. Just to give an overrate, an overview, excuse me, of the tax rate, it's basically, you know, assessed at $100 for every, 100 of the assessed property value. There's four components to the tax rate. And I'll go over each of those in a little bit more detail. At this point in time, based on the assessed value of all of property in Colonial, each penny on the tax rate raises about $300,000. So current expense, that is basically the discretionary operating money that we use for the bulk of our local operations. We can use that for anything other than paying off bonds or buying properties, it says. And right now, that is at 1.586 cents per $100 of assessed value. This can only be changed through referendum. So obviously, we have no changes recommended for this tax rate for this year. Debt service. This is basically the funds that we use to pay off all of the the bonds that are issued for our major capital projects. It is required to go to referendum to issue that debt and have those major capital projects move forward. The rate itself can vary based on how much money is needed to cover the debt service. This year, we're actually recommending to lower it by one penny because we are retiring some debt and, you know, because we haven't had a major capital project approved in, you know, in some time, we can actually lower that by one penny. We move on to the MCI or match tax. Basically, this started out as a fund to supplement the state money for minor capital improvements. Over time, the General Assembly has given districts additional taxing authority to cover things such are listed on the slide. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I do want to say that some of them, you know, even though they're considered matches, the state funds for those programs have long since gone away. And the local portion is really the only funds supporting, supporting some of these things. And the, the opportunity funds, there was, there was the ability to to match for some of the opportunity funds for mental health and reading positions that were appropriated last year that were not listed on the slide here. But there is no recommendation for a change in the rate on this one.
And what rate are we paying on that one? Do you have that information available?
I do, but it's at the end in a chart that I will show you in a second.
That's fine. That's fine. Just wait till then.
Yeah, it's nine cents. I apologize, it's not reflected on the slide. Tuition, as we've talked about, you know, many times before, tuition is the portion of our tax rate that supports our special education students and the special programs that they, that they receive services through. The parameters are, you know, listed here. It serves basically any student with an IEP that identifies them as a pre-K student or with intensive or complex needs can be supported with these funds. We, you know, as has been the case for several years, we continue to see the needs and the number of our special education students growing. We've certainly, you know, we want, we've increased our collaboration, you know, and I think we're making really good use of all of our available resources. However, because this is a growing population, I do think that it would be prudent to move the penny that we can reduce in debt service over to our tuition funds to ensure that, you know, there's, there's no increase in impact to our taxpayers, but it will allow us to continue to address the growing need in this area and ensure that we can, you know, preserve our discretionary operating dollars, you know, for, for meeting all the other needs of the district as, as these needs continue to grow. So here is the comparison chart for the tax rate year-over-year. As you can see, you know, there's an increase in tuition, a decrease in debt service. So the net impact of the rate change or the rate this year is a zero, zero change for our taxpayers. And this was discussed at the CFOC meeting last week and they are putting forward a recommendation for the board to approve this. Are there any questions?
Could you go back to your comparison chart, please?
Sure.
First of all, see if there's any questions from any other members of the board. Mr. Crosson, any questions?
No.
Ms. Wolf?
I just have one. In light of what we're experiencing right now in society, are there, is there talk of any new programs that, that we may need or want to offer that are not already under consideration?
It's a great question. I don't know that I'm the best person to answer that at this point in time. I think I'm going to kick that over to Dr. Menzer.
If there were any programs that are under consideration, Ms. Wolf, you could, there's been a, you know, we're pausing a little bit of our path forward. To get a better understanding of what the fiscal climate is going to be. And if there were any programs, they would not necessitate, I believe at this point, any recommendations that are impacted on this tax rate here. I mean, we have, we have been pretty sound stewards with the district's funds as well as seeking grants and other opportunities to expand programming and improve our leadership, our teaching and all of the things that go into running the district. So at this point, we're continuing on the path that we're on and we're going to hear the mantra probably and we're gonna hear the mantra probably over and over again from the state and us moving forward. We're, we're not expanding, but we're gonna continue to open the doors and we're gonna continue to do the things that we do best for students in the classroom as we try to get, come to grips with the financial impact uh, of the COVID crisis.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Handy, any questions?
Um, is there any way we can put this out, that we put out newsletters and stuff so the commu-, um, all the communities can see that when we are, when we, we do what we're supposed to do, where it says that tax change is at zero?
Yep. We could talk a little bit about making this something that's uh, more of a public facing document that doesn't create more confusion than it, it could. Um, but Ron, I think your point being that you just had an opportunity to raise taxes and you, you know, you're basically saying, "We didn't." Because we, we're respectful of the situation in the community as well as you're holding us fiscally responsible for the money that you're approving. So I think we could talk about a way that that can be messaged and packaged moving forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy, any questions?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. McGee?
No sir.
Okay, Ms., uh, Ms. Falcon, would it be your expectation that next year, which would be another year toward the debt service and whatnot, that we could further reduce that number?
Uh, that is entirely possible. Um, as I mentioned, you know, I think the oldest uh, debt we have on the books is two thousand one bo-, or I'm sorry, yeah, the oldest, I'm sorry, i- is two thousand one bonds. So they are actually gonna be fully paid off um, in the upcoming fiscal year. And, you know, as those drop off, um, our debt service will continue to go down. So we may be able to um, you know, continue to bring that rate down um, over time until, until we get to such a point where we need to issue, you know, any, any new debt and go to referendum for a major capital project.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no further questions, do I hear a motion to approve the tax rate?
Robyn Cross would like to make the motion. I make a motion to approve the recommended tax rate as presented by the Administration of the Fiscal Year beginning July 1, 2020. Grant authorization to President, Vice President, Executive Secretary of the Colonial School District Board of Education to issue a tax warrant to Newcastle County Department of Finance.
I hear a second.
Ron, Ron Handy, second.
Been moved a second to approve the tax rate as presented. There's no further questions. As I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Carlson?
Yay.
Mr. Handy?
Yay.
Mr. McGee?
Yay.
Ms. Kennedy?
Mr. Carlson, that was very well said, yay.
Ms. Wolf?
Yay.
Myself yay. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business we have is the July 2020 Board Meeting Proposed Change. For the members of the board, Mr. or Dr. Menzer and I have had some discussions in regards to the current situation with COVID and the delays and whatnot that we have, uh, that we've been experiencing. The Board of Education elections are not being held until approximately June 12th.
July, no, July twenty.
July 12th, July 21st, right. So latter, latter part of the month. So, um, I made a suggestion and we put it on the uh, agenda for this month to discuss is to change our July Board Meeting to uh, the end of the month as stated in the uh, in the agenda for July 28th. So, um, do I hear a motion to accept that proposed change and then put it open for discussion?
This is Rosie Wolf. I'll make the motion to accept that proposed change on the school board date meeting.
I hear a second.
Ron Handy. Second.
Been moved a second to change the July 20th, or July 2020 Board Meeting from July 7th to July 28th. Is there any questions or discussion? Mr. Carlson, anything?
No.
Ms. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Handy?
No questions.
Mr. McGee?
No questions.
Ms. Kennedy?
I'm good.
With that being said, as I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Carlson?
Yay.
Ms. Wolf?
Yay.
Mr. Handy?
Yay.
Mr. McGee?
Yay.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yay.
Myself yay. That motion is carried. Thank you. Next order of business we have is the MOU to the Collaborative Agreement. First one is in regards to the teachers. Dr. Menzer, would you like to give a brief description?
So in front of you, uh, under item 10 on the agenda are MOUs to uh, extend the current collaborative agreements. Uh, as the board has been aware and updated throughout the spring, we were in negotiation with all five of our collective bargaining groups. While uh, the COVID crisis happened like literally smack in the middle of several of those negotiations, both sides agreed that the process needed to be paused and for these groups. And uh, agreed at your direct, I believe, you asked us to seek out a, a pause as well. And uh, these MOUs are just uh, your agreement with the bargaining units to pause the negotiations and extend the current contract another year so that we can begin in good faith uh, sometime in the fall or early winter.
Thank you.
We have to vote on each separately because they're all separate bargaining groups. So you see in front of you, the, the motion restated three times because you did pull the transportation one because we do not have that MOU to present tonight.
Alright, so do I hear a motion in regards to the teachers' contract?
Ron Handy, make a motion to consider, um, action upon the memorandum of understanding to the collaborative agreement with the Colonial Education Association as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Can you re-, I'm sorry. Can that be repeated? Sorry.
Yeah, the motion was of consideration and action upon the memorandum of understanding to the collaborative agreement with the Colonial Education Association.
If I may make a point of clarification, Mr. Law, is that it, that the consideration of the motion is, the motion would be, I, I don't think Mr. Handy stated either a rejection or an approval of that. He has to, he has to take a, make a, a statement there. I think that was what I didn't, I didn't hear it if he did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the que-, the question is, Ron, is do you, uh, to accept the MOU or to reject it?
Uh, accept, I'll make a motion to accept the MOU as presented.
Do I hear a second?
This is Rosie Wolf. I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved a second to approve the memorandum of understanding for the collaborative agreement with the Colonial Education Association as presented. Do I hear any questions? Hearing none, as I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Carlson?
Yay.
Ms. Wolf?
Yay.
Mr. Handy?
Yay.
Mr. McGee?
Yay.
Ms. Kennedy? Ms. Kennedy?
Yay.
Myself yay. Motion is approved. The next order of business we have is the motion or the memorandum of under, of agreement for paraprofessionals. Would be the same basic theory that Dr. Menzer has already discussed, only this time with paraprofessionals. But do I hear a motion to either accept or reject the consideration of the MOU for the collaborative agreement with the CPA?
Robyn Cross, and I make a motion to accept the consideration, action upon the memorandum of understanding to the collaborative agreement with the Colonial Power Association as presented.
Do I hear a second?
This is Rosie Wolf. I second that.
Been moved a second to accept, to accept and approve the MOU for the collaborative agreement with the Colonial Power Association as presented. Any questions? Hearing none, as I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Carlson?
Yay.
Yay.
Mr. Handy?
Yay.
Mr. McGee?
Yay.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yay.
Myself yay. The motion is carried. Transportation has been removed at this point in time. Next order of business we have is the memorandum of understanding with nutrition. Do I hear a motion to either accept or reject the, the consideration or action of the MOU with the nutrition service workers?
This is Rosie Wolf. I'll make the motion to accept the nutrition workers, uh, the MOUs for the nutrition workers as presented.
I hear a second. Been moved a second to approve, to approve the acceptance of the MOU for the nutrition workers as presented. Any further questions? Hearing none, as I call your name, please signify by saying aye or nay. Mr. Carlson?
Aye.
Ms. Wolf?
Aye.
Mr. Handy?
Aye.
Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Kennedy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion is carried. The next order of business we have is the collaborative agreement with the um, AFL CME, AFL-CIO Local 218 of Council 81. Do I hear a motion to accept or reject the custodial collective bargaining agreement with the AFL, AFL SCME Local?
Robyn Cross would like to make a motion. I make a motion to reject motion of consideration and action upon custodial collective bargaining agreement with American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Local 218, Council 81 as presented.
Do I hear a second to the motion to reject the agreement?
Leo McGee, second.
Been moved a second to reject the custodial collective bargaining agreement. Any further questions? Hearing none, as I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Carlson?
Yay.
Ms. Wolf?
Nay.
Mr. Handy?
Say that again? I'm sorry.
The motion has been made to reject the collective bargaining agreement with the custodial service. Is your, your yea? Mr. McGee?
Yay.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yay.
Myself yay. Motion is carried, five to one. If, if I can, just a brief statement. In the wake of the severe economic uncertainty that has emerged since early March as part of the COVID, the Colonial School Board of Education cannot ratify the custodial contract that's negotiated. We realize that there was a good faith effort made by both the union and the administration by the financial landscape has changed dramatically since then, and we must consider these changes. The next order of business is this, is, is the Superintendent's Office Report. Dr. Menzer?
Uh, thanks Ted. Um, so we, I have two presentations. One, uh, the first presentation is gonna be, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Dr. Lida. If you recall back, uh, it feels like eons ago in the fall when we were talking, uh, during the transition time, uh, about the path forward for the district. Who could imagine we'd be at this point in time that the path forward looked the way it does now? But we still continued that conversation, uh, around what is the path forward for the Colonial School District? And we've uh, prepared a strategic planning effort that Dr. Light is gonna kind of kick off, share with you and um, get some feedback from you, uh, around the process that we hope to engage with our community. And I'm not gonna steal any of his thunder, so Pete, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good evening again, President Law, Vice President Kennedy, and Colonial Nation. Excited to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight, um, about our plan for, uh, developing a strategic planning process. Um, I am super grateful for this opportunity and for our partnership with Kate England from Inside Education Group, who has helped us to map out what we believe would be, will be a strong plan to engage our community in a new and different way to build a path to the next, the generation of our colonial learners. Um, tonight we're gonna focus on two, two different main objectives. The purposes for and components of a plan, um, the, the proposed planning process and the timeline. And then to answer the question of how we engage stakeholders in the strategic planning process. Um, you might remember that we had a strategic plan, planning process and strategic plan almost a decade ago at this point, um, that, uh, that process will then, will look a lot different this time around. I can guarantee that. Um, and, but that last one was also very important to us as we learned a lot and we were able to um, implement a lot from that plan, including the redesign of our high school as an example. So a strategic plan helps organizations align all the arrows of the district towards a common goal and ensures a focus on priorities. This plan will help us ensure a continued focus on the power of we and those intended outcomes. It's important to know that a strategic plan is a living document. It helps us to maintain our course and provide updates to our community and to, again, to ensure that the, the drivers of improvement are in place so that we can continue our growth as a district. When we think about the various components of a strategic plan, I'm sure many of you have been a part of the strategic planning process in your organizations in the past. Um, there are several key components, um, that are found in most comprehensive, comprehensive strategic plans. We haven't identified every single one of those components to this point. Here are just a few of the different examples that are traditionally included. Um, as the plan is being developed, we will accept and, and discard those, those elements of a strategic plan that we find to be most valuable. Um, and to, this is not an all encompassing list. There are other items as well, but this is a good example of what many plans often include. When we think about the strategic planning process in Colonial, uh, the most, and one of the most important priorities is to make sure that we maintain the power of we and the power of we, the goals and tenets set forth from the power of we. Um, the other one that I really wanted to highlight from this bulleted list here is that making sure that we engage deeply in hearing the hopes and dreams of a wide range of stakeholders in Newcastle. Um, this goes beyond our, our students, staff, um, and parents to engage community, community members as we know that, um, the educational institution has a significant impact on communities. And, uh, we look forward to engaging more deeply with the community. This slide outlines the various strategic planning stages that we'll engage in. There's a little bit more details behind this on other, you know, other documents, but this is a good overview of what to expect in the coming months. We actually started putting together this plan back in January 2020. And even before that, last summer, we had had many conversations at the Superintendent's level around the, the strategic planning process. We got to this point right now where we are presenting it to all of you for your support. And from here, what we will do is then take this, um, this presentation. We have identified some potential facilitators of the, of the conversations. We will, um, engage with those facilitators and train them, identify different sites and dates for engagement sessions, and then create and publish those, those schedules for, um, staff, students, and parents in the community so that we can maximize the number of stakeholders that we can engage as possible. That will, that engagement process will begin in August 2020 and will continue through February 2021. You know, we'll have to obviously see where we are with regards to COVID as to whether or not we are, um, face to face or virtual, or how often we are either one of those things. But we, we do continue to, to plan to press forward, um, during this time as we believe. during this time as we believe that this is really important. And collect lots of information so we can make some informed decisions around what the strategic plan should look like. Beginning in March, we will begin to design the strategic plan based on the data that has been gained and the information we have gleaned from the engagement sessions. And we'll also, you know, continue with the guiding group until we get to a point where we finalize a strategic plan. And then hopefully in about 14 months, we'll be back here with you and we will have a strategic plan for your review and approval. And of course, along the way, we will have some updates about how that process is going. So this is not the last time you're going to hear from me. And the other thing I would probably, this is a more detailed slide around what that engagement will look like. And one of the things to, just to highlight on here is the sessions will follow questioning protocol based on the break question technique. That's a question storming process that we have used multiple times to arrive at new ideas and to help us make plans for our district. So that is it for me. What questions, comments or concerns do you have?
Hey, do we have any questions for Dr. Leida? Mr. Crossson?
No.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kennedy?
Um, no, not at this time.
Ms. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Handy?
No, sir.
All right, Dr. Leida, I, I know that we, as, as you mentioned earlier, we had a strategic plan that we worked on a few years ago. And it's, as you said, it's time to revisit that, which you are. Thank you very much for doing that and leading that effort. But I'm assuming that as part of your task in your process is you'll not only be updating that existing strategic plan, but then making additions to it as well. Am I correct under with that assumption?
So I don't know if I would call it updating the strategic plan. I think that we'll revisit it, but that binder Jeff ran across it recently. It's, it's had, it's collected quite a bit of dust, Mr. Laws, and I think it's time for pretty much an overhaul of the strategic plan.
So the act-
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I'm, I'm just, I guess my question is, is you're going to take some of the parts of that strategic plan and include them into your updated slash rehaul?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of work in strategic plans that have been done over the, the last, you know, few years to make them a lot more user friendly. And so that they don't end up as a guide that sits on the, you know, on the superintendent's shelf. And that, you know, we have a lot of different iterations that we're going to be able to look at to see which one really works best for Colonial. Jeff, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say that the, the, the plan he's referencing is about five inches thick. I did start to parse through it in the, as I began to move into Dusty's office. And I can just tell you, each page looks the same. And I think just a word has changed each time. It was very, it is there and there is a strategic plan. And it did serve a huge purpose in helping us redesign the high school because that was what screamed loud and clear at almost every public session. Because I was the principal of William Penn at the time. And we did take that to heart that we felt William Penn needed to change. And so many of the things that have spun out of William Penn, the degree programs, the middle school redesign, the responsive classroom, things that are engaging kids and families do spin out of some of the energy that came from that five inch thick binder. But it wasn't because of the binder. It was more just because we were, you know, given the green light by the community to move forward with this. And we feel that this process that we're about to engage in is going to, is going to take it to the next level, Ted. So the work is not gone and it's not forgotten, but I think it will be enhanced with this process.
And, and that's what I expect for it to happen from a personal standpoint. I, I know the work that was put into that strategic plan and that five inch binder is, because I think Leo and I, Leo and I are the only board members that are sitting here today that was part of that process. So
Right.
There was a, there was a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of heartache and a lot of headaches after all that too. So I just want to make sure that it's not all thrown out
No.
and forgotten about. I think you need to look at that. And there are parts of that that I think should be considered to be included into your, into your new strategic plan and updated strategic plan.
It can serve as a, as a, as a foundation for the path forward, Ted. There are some elements to it. Pete will just be spending the next 28 to 48 hours reading the table of contents and then scheduling the month out, read all the pages. We'll make sure he gets on.
Well, that's good.
And I appreciate you bringing that, that point up.
Right. He, he needs something to do. No, I'm just kidding. And I would also ask that on this, on this new proposal on your strategic plan is that you have a review slash expiration date that we make sure that we force ourselves to go back and do it. And most certainly will not be the same length of time of what we had on the last strategic plan.
Yeah, one of the things that we had, that we were tossing around was the idea of using it either as a, as a quarterly check in and definitely as the annual report so that we can get back into the groove of regularly updating the, the community on our progress towards the goals that we have set forth. The other thing that I think that's, that's really important to our community is that, you know, the journey for putting the strategic plan together is just as important as the destination. And I think that, you know, the engagement process we hope will help energize the, the district as well.
What are some of the groups that you're expecting to include as part of your stakeholders as developing of your strategic plan?
So we were, we were crafting out that we would probably hold around 20 to 25 stakeholder sessions from beginning, probably the end of August, early September through February. The stakeholder sessions would be open to anyone that is available during that time, but we would vary the time. So we would have some that would be nine o'clock in the morning and we would do kind of a donuts for dad and try to get lots of dads, you know, into a session and facilitate conversations with them. We would do some, some after school sessions right after school so we can make it easily accessible for our teaching staff in various locations. We would do a few in the evening. And then now because of our ability to really leverage Zoom, and by that time, hopefully we won't be completely zoomed out. That will be, we'll use Zoom as an opportunity to virtually connect with community and facilitate conversations. I'd like to hold, you know, I'd like to hold summit of our community centers. I'd like to hold sessions at Firehouse and gather some of our, you know, just the local community members that may not have kids that are in, in one of our schools, but also have an invested interest, obviously, in the educational system.
And I'm certain that you're going to include students as part of these stakeholder groups?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yes.
Are you going to make that available to meet with the students during the day at the class day? Or are you going to be doing that in the afternoon?
Probably a little bit of both. You know, I'm, the goal here is to engage as many voices as we possibly can because we think that's just really important. It's, and which is a little bit different maybe than we had previously from the, and I was part of the, the last strategic planning process. I've been part of other strategic planning processes where, you know, it's, it's the same time every month, which, you know, makes it really difficult for, for people to engage. And so I think we have the opportunity to change the system here a little bit on how we, the process on how we engage the community. And in a more deep, more deeply.
Right. And, and one of the groups that I've, in, in the years past, I've tried to make the suggestion that we get active in our board meetings some way, shape or form is the Student Government Association out of the high school. So not only would I think that you would have students as a stakeholders group, but I would, would ask that you try to consider some way to get that, that student government organization involved some way, shape or form. So we can get them learning to do the things that we do as board members now because at some point in time we're going to need to have replacements for people in our, in our position. So I think that's part of our teaching and the opportunities that we give our students that we should be giving those, that exposure to them.
I love that idea. Absolutely.
I have a suggestion. You ever think about reaching out to the recent graduates of William Penn? Because they're, they're fresh out of school and they can give you that. They can look back and maybe see some things they wish they had to learn or some, a different viewpoint after they graduate versus them being a student within the school.
Yeah, another great idea. And the alumni, you know, the alumni association for William Penn is really strong and has a, has a great history. And, you know, we have a lot of grads that do live in the community. So I think that's, thank you for the reminder on that. And I will make sure as we, as we get this, the word out for sessions that we include that distribution list as well.
How about our business partners?
Absolutely. Yep.
I mean, from the financial side, we have the Bank Americas and, and all those as well as Christiana Care and whatnot. So I think we should be reaching out to those as well if you haven't already.
Yeah, we have lots of, we have lots of partners. That's, that is for sure. That can, that can really help us inform where our path forward.
Well, they've been good to us in the past with, with funding and help us get things like we have over to the high school with the, with the, with the centers that we have. And I think we should continue to implore them as much as possible. And I know Dr. Menzer was a big part of that and a lot of those things. So I'd like to see that all continue and ask, and continue to ask them for our help.
Yep.
Making-
Any further questions for Dr. Leida on his presentation? Not, thank you very much, Dr. Menzer?
Thank you.
All right. So I have a couple of things just to, to update the board on. A little bit of a June, July update, I guess, two month at a time, just to kind of give you some heads up to what's going on and coming up. Last week, the district put out a pretty powerful statement in reaction to the events occurring across the country with respect to the racial injustice and the communications and the, and the riots and the speaking and the protesting and the, the feelings of the, of the, the black and brown communities. We put out a pretty solid statement really early on, very simple and short and to the point. But behind that statement is a lot of work. The district has been working steadily for, district leadership has been working steadily for two years with equity, professional development, educators of color, groups of staff who are working to support the equity effort as well as some involvement with other outside organizations that we are going to be hosting a panel discussion tomorrow at seven o'clock. You were all received the invite in the staff update that came out last Friday. I would, I would encourage you to attend as, as attendees and just hear what's, what the work is that we've been doing, the conversations that we've been having and kind of give you a sense of the path forward that we're going to be taking. So I definitely encourage you to, to, to view that. At the same time, we have to begin planning to return to school. We are starting on Thursday. We're kicking off a infor, a formal work group of about 55 employees that are going to be like the, this, the center of our, our safe return to school planning. And we're looking at an ongoing conversation with staff, students and parents around what does school look like in the fall in Colonial? You'll notice in today's Colonial clipping, a letter from myself as long, as well as a link to a survey for parents. And the principals were pushing that out earlier as well because we really need as many parents to chime in to let us know what they're thinking to help us make an informed decision for the best interest of all children and staff. William Penn graduation ceremony, the virtual ceremony is Saturday at 6:30. And then there's plans on June 25th for a diploma capping gown pickup or diploma pickup in capping gown with a photo op walking across the, the stage, which is the front of William Penn with the name being called and a professional photographer. William Penn has done an outstanding job honoring and recognizing the graduates of William Penn. And this, the next couple of weeks are going to be no, no exception to that. They are going to be spectacular. So if you get a chance to watch the virtual commencement speech as the, the ceremony. But then if you hear about the activity at William Penn, we are restricted to the number of people who can be in one place and how we're doing it. We're managing it very securely and safely with respect to CDC and DPH guidelines. But they've put together what I think will be an outstanding program that I know will be broadcast all over social media when it happens. It's, I think it's going to be a, a really great event. Summer programs, you know, we've, we are offering a host of virtual summer programs for all of our different age groups and students from our ESY, from our 12 month program to our Tyler's camps and our middle school camps, as well as we've expanded our offering to our elementary school students. We have created our own virtual elementary school program by grade level across the district. And we've started taking registrations for that last week at no cost to the community. For a first week out for a brand new program enrollment was really encouraging. We did make the decision that students will keep their devices through the summer into the fall. So we are not collecting devices because we want to encourage students to stay connected with learning in any means possible. Also, you know, we've received guidance this week from the Department of Education and from DEMA that includes our return to work. The workplace, it's a simple document. It says return to the workplace guidance for government agencies. We will begin looking at that document and start looking ahead to July 7th as a, a target for us to begin thinking about how do we return to work in our workplaces? Although during phase one, two and three of the return, if you can, you are still expected that if you can work from home, you are to work from home. But we are going to begin to get ourselves back into the office. We already have optional hours for 12 month staff this past several weeks, and it's been going well. We're learning a lot of the ins and outs of what we need to do. But starting in July, July 7th, we'll begin a more formal rollback so that by the time we're slotted to have students back in buildings, we'll be back up and running to our fullest capacity in person. The only other real big update I have is just a heads up that you may be getting an invite, an email from Mary Beth that mentions a possible emergency school board meeting in the mid to end of June to consider a construction project that because of the COVID time, the timing of approvals made it so that we weren't able to do the bid opening until later in the month. And therefore we would, we don't, we couldn't have it in front of you today to vote on, but we may need to be convening an emergency meeting to get your approval to move forward on a project at Cary Downey with their water main. And literally it's going to be a day or two after the bid opening and acceptance because we are hearing, and I'm sure Ted can attest, or anybody in the construction world can attest, jobs are stacking up fast and they are, they are moving. And we want to get our vendor onboard and acting on our job. We want it to be a priority so that when we return in the fall that we're up and running. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. Mary Beth will be sending out an email shortly. Last thing, I have two staff I would like to call out for recommendation, accommodations or tribute, so to speak. This staff member is retiring. And though he is not a staff member, he's been an integral part of the Colonial School District for the last 12 years. Master Corporal Rich Collins of Delaware State Police, our school SRO, is retiring this month. If ever you've seen him, you know, he looms large both as a physical presence, but as an emotional presence in support for our students and staff. He has been nothing but stellar and we couldn't be prouder that he was our SRO for 12 months in his buildings. And all of our buildings from McCullough, from Commodore McDonough to Newcastle Elementary to Wallen to William Penn, you name it. He has been a rock for us and we appreciate his years of support. And I will say, if you are following any of our food nutrition vans out or buses out into the community, he was one of the SROs trailing along. And I'm going to tell you nine times out of 10, he was out of his car door delivering meals to families in all of our communities. The guy is just super spectacular and we were really going to miss him. And I just wanted to say to him, I don't think he's in the audience, but I really, we appreciate his commitment to Colonial.
Yes, I've seen that firsthand.
Yeah, pretty special. I mean, we got some pictures of it and it's just really awesome to see. And then lastly, I, I wanted to give Rosie Wolf my heartfelt appreciation. The fact that she just made the motion to move the board meeting to later in July, I don't know if she did that on purpose or not. That makes this her last board meeting because she'll be gone when they have the election, but we, we won't ask that publicly. But she came onboard in a tough time when we needed someone to fill a seat. She willingly stepped in and then willingly ran a campaign to just do one more year to fill out a term. a campaign to just do one more year to fill out a term. And I want to say thank you, Rosie, for your years, your service to the district. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to say any words to, to the community.
Thank you, Dr. Mensah. To you, to President Laws, to Vice President Kennedy and the board members, to all the paraeducators and teachers, the administration, the operations, to everyone who didn't leave anyone out. But, um, you know, I thought I was going to come and in a small way serve you. And what I came away with was 18 months of you serving me. So I just want to thank everyone for that. It's, it's been my honor and privilege to, to serve in this capacity. And although this capacity is changing, that doesn't mean that I'm not still here and supportive of our district. I'm so proud. Time and time and again, you know, I see you all rise to the occasion above and beyond to do what you need to do to take care of the families in our community. And that is so important and so impressive. So I just want to say thank you to you all.
Thank you, Rosie. And I will add one more kudos that I feel like it was eons ago, but we did announce our teacher of the year last Friday, Kyrie Bay, health teacher at McCullough. What a really spectacular event that was. I hope you got to see the video that went out last, last week. We're really excited to have Kyrie representing us at the state level. The tough field and as you, every year, great competition. Someone has to be, someone has to win, right? And we're really fortunate that he's going to be representing us. So I don't mean to cut you off there, Rosie, and not let you close it out, but I had to give him a shout out too. So he wasn't on the script, but it popped into my head. So I thought we'd get it out there. That's it for me, Ted.
All right. Well, no, what I, what I would like to add though is, is to Rosie is, Rosie, it's been a pleasure working with you for the 18 months. We're glad you were able to come along, join us and we appreciate your input and hopefully you will stay active within the district and be there if we need you.
Absolutely.
Look forward to it. In regards to Rich Collins, I've known Rich Collins for 15 years. And to say that he looms large is an understatement. I will tell you that there's kids that have graduated from William Penn High School that when they see him on the other side of a store, the other side of a building or anything else, I've seen them take off and drop what they were doing and go over and talk to the man. And I've seen it just the opposite as well to where he will see a student or, or a parent from William Penn High School that he has had interaction with and he will do the same thing. I would like to suggest that when we are able to have our retirement function that we have for our district is that we include Officer Collins as part of that because he is a member of the Colonial family. And it's considered one of those. That's how important that I think he has been to, to the district.
So noted, Ted.
I would also like to say too, that I would like to give my thanks to the entire staff of the Colonial School District, starting with you, Jeff, and your, and your organization. The last three months has been trying. We've, we've had to go and do some things that we've never thought was possible in regards to making arrangements on the fly to get things done, to close schools, to open, to get cleaning done and whatnot. But the effort that was put forward by the entire staff to get the virtual learning portion up and running and being what I consider as successful as it is today is truly appreciated. At this point in time though, I would also say too, that I don't expect us to take any more snow days. I think that we have virtual learning, virtual learning down that we should be able to have our, our kids, if we're off for snow, they're still learning some way, shape or form. So keep that in mind. Pete, as you're putting your strategic plan together and how we can, how he can deal with that. So is there any other opportunities or questions or comments from, from the other board members in regards to any of the items that Dr. Lyda or Dr. Mensah or Ms. Wolf has brought to our attention?
Well, I have one. How you doing? Newcastle Prevention Coalition, it'll be June the 26th from six to 7:30 or putting together a virtual celebration for all the kids who graduated on the Route 9 corridor. So we have some local artists that are going to perform. We have a person from the 76ers that sent us a video. And we're just trying to get that information out there and we're going to have a balloon release at 7:20 for everybody that graduated on the Route 9 corridor. We just want them to have the school color or the balloons and this will wait for us to get back to them. And we also going to have a billboard on Route 9 by Canaan Church celebrating all the graduates.
Great. Thank you, Ron.
Great, thank you. Mr. Crosson, anything?
You're on mute, Rob. I think we lost him.
Rob, Robin, you're on mute, bud.
One more time. The Flag Your Server with Rosemary. And I'd just like to thank her for all she has done. Very good.
Thanks, Rob.
Ms. Kennedy, anything?
You're going to leave me as the only girl again.
Rosie, good luck. Thank you. You've been a positive influence on all of us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Lucy.
Yes, you have.
Mr. McGee, anything?
Yes, Rosie, going to miss your smile. Kept the place alive.
Thanks, Leo.
Also, Jeff and Ted, Richie Collins was one of the strongest things we had at the, at the high school for the longest time. He's really, he's really pillar of our society.
That he was, that he is, I shouldn't say was, he's still around.
I, I know. Can we make a resolution by the board to present it to him?
I would, I would say that we should spend some time and draft that up and have it ready for the July meeting.
That'd be great.
All right, okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Dr. Mensah? You're good.
I'm done with my report, Mr. Laws.
Okay, the next order of business we have is an added item to our agenda in regards to the added vacation to carryover. Dr. Mensah, would you please describe a folks?
So there's been, when the COVID crisis occurred, it definitely threw people back in terms of their working, their vacation scheduled across the state. And there's been a lot of ongoing dialogue at the state level around what to do with those vacation days that accrue. As you, many of you should, do know or maybe don't know is that you're not allowed to exceed 42 days of carryover vacation. So the state has written into epilogue language that they're willing to grant a six month extension on the carryover of vacation days for 12 month employees. But in order for that to be granted, the board needs to sign a letter. Ted, I sent the copy of the letter to you from Mary Beth this afternoon. We did just receive this communication, I think midday Saturday that this needed to be board approved. That's why it's so late for the agenda. So I would just ask if the board grant you the permission to sign that letter that allows us to participate in the six month extension.
All right, with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve the request for the 12 month employees annual leave carryover in excess of 42, 42 days to be extended for up to six months? Do I hear a motion?
This is Rosie.
Go ahead, Rosie. Yeah, go ahead, Rosie.
I tried to wait there. Yeah, I'll make the motion, Ted, to, to grant that extension six months.
All right, do I hear a second?
I second.
It's been moved second to approve the request for a 12 month employees annual leave carryover in excess of 42 days to be extended for up to six months. Any further questions? Hearing none as I call your name, please signify by saying yea or nay. Mr. Crosson?
Yay.
Mr. Handy?
Yay.
Dr. McGee?
Yay.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yay.
Ms. Wolf?
Yay.
And myself, yea, the motion is carried. Next order of business we have is items removed from the consent agenda. We had none. Public comment. Has anyone registered for public comment?
No, they have not, Mr. Laws.
Okay. With that being said, that exhausts all of our items we have on our agenda for this evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You're not even going to let Rosie second the last one though? That's a dirty trick.
I seconded.
It's been, it's been moved a second to adjourn. All the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. And for those of you that will be around and are going off on vacation, have a nice Fourth of July since we won't be meeting, be meeting until the end of July. Take care, everyone.
You too, all. Take care.
Be safe and be careful.
Bye-bye, Rosie.
See y'all.